Okay, seeing quorum, the chair opens up the Wednesday, July 17th, 2019, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, in the wokoyat Meeting Room, the time is 7:00. I want to welcome everyone here today, remind everybody that we're being videographed and recorded. If you have an opportunity to address the board, please do so at a microphone, let us know your name, your address, and your comment. I'd like to invite everyone to stand with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have public hearings this evening, so people will have an opportunity to address the board. First matter is approval of minutes of July 3rd, 2019. I looked at them, I didn't have any corrections. Does anybody have any corrections?
Do not.
Not? I entertain a motion to accept as, to approve as presented?
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, so our seventh for the Cape and Islands Engineering? Okay, so we'll get to that then. What I'd like to do is try to approve the A and Rs. We have two A and Rs in front of us. John, why don't you come up and make your presentation on them? There's one for 28 Blue Castle Drive and one for 20 Blue Castle Drive. Hey, John.
Good evening. My name is John McElroy, I'm here on two separate applications. One application for 20 Blue Castle Drive, representing Ellen Brady, and another application for 28 Blue Castle Drive, representing Duco Associates Incorporated. We've been here a couple of times before and discussed this project, but just kind of as a refresher, Blue Castle Drive is a road in Mashpee that is unpaved, it's an unpaved private road. For at least one of these lots-
I think you're gonna have to hold the mic, John.
Okay, sure. For at least one of these lots, it's, I think that it's non-conforming, but it is a buildable lot, it's protected status, and that's kind of an aside from the A and R, but I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Which one was that?
This is the Brady slot, 20 Blue Castle.
Okay, and it has that notation, no determination as to compliance with zoning requirements had been made or intended by this endorsement under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L.
Right.
Okay.
That would be a separate determination that the building department would make. But it does show 165 feet of frontage along Blue Castle Drive. So the question really for both of these lots is, is Blue Castle Drive adequate access for access to this lot? The significant part of this for me is that you guys actually addressed this question in approving the Aquay Highlands subdivision. It wasn't expressly addressed, it's more of, I think, by implication because of the improvements that were required by the special permit, approving that subdivision acknowledged that this road is going to be used. Before that was done, it was kind of a meandering road, it was much smaller than the 40-foot wide drive that is presented on the plan. It didn't stay within that road layout, and a lot of those issues were addressed. It also included comments from the fire marshal. So the significant concern that is brought up whenever you're considering subdivisions or A and R plans, safety, efficient access, efficient travel, those concerns were addressed under the special permit. So these lots are outside of the special permit, they're privately owned, but they would be getting access over the same road. So what I am asking for is an approval of the A and R that the road is adequate access for these lots.
It's like an approval of an approval not required?
Yeah.
It's a little odd, I mean, these also are not subdivisions because we're not dividing the lots, these lots were divided prior to the subdivision control law, but it does seem like perhaps a proper vehicle to have the question asked of the planning board in a way that allows for public comments if necessary.
So Dennis, do you have any comments?
No, I think it's, I like to just look at A and Rs, you know, he meets the frontage and people have been using it for 25, 30 years when it wasn't right, and it's fixed pretty good now, I love Charlie thinks about it, but it's 100% better than it was three, three years ago, the road. I don't have no problem with this.
Joe, any comments?
No problem.
I'm gonna defer my comments to after hearing Charlie.
I'd like to hear what Charlie has to say.
Joe, do you have, okay, so Charlie. Charlie just saw them, so let's see.
I did, but I'm familiar with them.
Okay.
Under the guidelines of Section 81L, the board only has to make a determination as to whether you feel that the frontage was in one of three categories, shall we say. The first, whether or not it was ever shown on a subdivision plan which your board approved. I know of no such plan. There was a plan that was prepared for the Water District, I believe, a few years back, but I don't know that it ever came before this board under a subdivision, so I don't think it qualifies under that.
Mm-hmm.
I do not believe, although I don't have evidence, that it is, it's not a way which is certified by the town clerk as being a townway. So I think it falls under the third category under Section 81L, that it was a way in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control, which in your opinion has suitable access with grade construction for the purpose that these lots are being constructed or created. That does not negate the requirement to satisfy the zoning bylaw with respect to being able to get a building permit on this lot, or the two lots, because that's a separate issue which is handled by either the building department and/or the zoning board of appeals. So I think that your endorsement of the plan, and I hesitate to call it an improvement, an approval, because it really isn't, what you're saying by signing this plan is, you don't have a real interest in it in terms of it being a subdivision, because it falls under one of those three categories that I just mentioned.
Okay.
So as a board, I think you need to deliberate whether or not you feel the construction, the way it is today, meets one of those three statutory requirements. I do have a question on the, on the first plan, having read the deed for the property, but I don't think it's, it's an appropriate issue to bring up here, it's a, it's a question that is a legal interpretation. The configuration of the lot, in my opinion, does not fit the deed configuration, but that's not a matter for this board to be concerned about, it's stamped by a registered engineer, and if there's any question about it, it'll be handed in other areas, so.
So, any other questions for the project proponent on either of these maps? Either of these plans? Okay. And entertain a motion to endorse the A and R for 28 Blue Castle Drive, looking for a date, it kind of got cut off. Can you see the date for 28 Blue Castle in the bottom right?
The 6/5/2019?
No, on the other, the other side.
Oh, May 9th, 2019.
May 9th. Is there a motion to endorse that A and R?
So be.
Is there a second?
Wait, do we have to put why we were endorsing this, that like step three, or?
I'm assuming if you're voting positive, you're voting that the-
It meets one of those criteria.
The way is adequate under the-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we-
We never have before, so.
But, so be, I made that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So likewise, for 20 Blue Castle, entertain a motion to endorse this A and R dated May 9th, 2019.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we can sign. Okay, so this, let me just take care of another matter, John, real quick. Seeing the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing for Cape and Islands Engineering. Cape and Islands Engineering has submitted an application for consideration for a definitive subdivision pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, on behalf of Mark and Donna Lopez, subject property owners. The subject property is currently addressed as 103 Meeting House Road and identified on a searchers map and block 45-50-0, that's 45-50-0. The parcel consists of 284,184 plus or minus square feet area located on the west side of Meeting House Road and to the east of Mashpee River. We received correspondence from Cape and Islands Engineering dated July 16th, 2019. It's regarding request to continue public hearing, 103 Meeting House Road, Mashpee, Mass, map 45, parcel 50, definitive subdivision plan and special permit. Per our conversation today, this is addressed to Mr. Lehrer, per our conversation today, please accept this email on behalf of the applicant to continue the definitive subdivision application currently scheduled to be on the planning board's July 17th agenda, to continue it two weeks to allow for additional time to evaluate the process involving the state legislature and to better determine future timelines for approval. Thank you for consideration, if you have any questions, that was from Matthew Costa. So there's other correspondence that's in your packet from the trustees, I think that's the trustees of the reservations.
Yes.
And then Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, this, there's properties that are, if I understand correctly, properties that are, the ownership of being transferred, and that's why the state legislature has been referenced in the letter to continue it. So we can't take public comment on it, if you haven't, if you're here for that matter, if you have any questions, I can give you the correspondence and refer you to the town planner. But seeing that, I'd like to continue this for two weeks.
I make a motion to continue until August 7th at 7:10.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Anything on that, wait a minute, anything on?
Is there, is there some time available on that date?
I believe 7:10 is an occup, we have a public hearing to consider a road naming, 7:20 would be more adequate.
Okay, so 7:20.
7:20? Is there a second for 7:20?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anybody that wants the correspondence? And then 7:10, that's where you have one more. Okay? Okay, so we can sign the A and R.
Are you all gonna do it, just one?
You've all submitted to the registry that everyone can sign A and R, but since you're here, why don't you, why don't you put your signatures on the other side? Just get the filing.
Do you know if this pen works?
I don't know if it's a Mylar, that's why it's a little bit fat, a sharp point.
So the Mylar-
Use that.
The pointy tip, it's all I got, that's hard.
Okay.
Today is the 17th, right?
Correct. This I do not use.
So the Mylars are, you know, they're expensive, so you have to use permanent marker and just, be really careful, right?
Yeah.
You don't wanna-
Don't smudge it.
One time I brought a purple Sharpie because I thought it was a black Sharpie and it became a red.
You need Mylar assignment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big boy.
How are you guys?
I did not plan wearing these colors tonight.
I like it. You're representing them.
I'm just gonna randomly pick, pick a line.
Oh, it's gonna be in black.
It's gonna be in black, yeah.
The paper's okay, those are from my records, the recorded-
Oh, the Mylar, oh, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Those are just for my record keeping purposes. In reality, I only need one, but everyone, you know, it's become practice to sign a million.
Yep.
We get wallpaper.
The paper ones, you can put a pop right down there.
No, the Mylars go to the registry and get recorded.
I kept yours.
This one's a little flimsy if it's gonna happen.
Yes.
So seeing that the appointed time arrived of 7:15 for Cape and Islands Engineering, so this is the public hearing for the special permit, so I have to open that up and continue that as well. Cape and Islands Engineering has submitted an application for consideration for a special permit for a cluster subdivision to create three building slots, three building lots, and two open space parcels pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, 40A, Section 9, in the Massachusetts, I'm sorry, in the Mashpee zoning bylaw, Section 174-25I4, on behalf of Mark and Donna Lopez, property owners of the subject parcel. The parcel consists of 284,184 plus or minus square feet, an area located on the west side of Meeting House Road and to the east of Mashpee River. So seeing that the project proponent has requested a continuance for two weeks, I entertain a motion to put this on the agenda for 7:25 on-
August 7th.
August 7th.
No, August 7th. So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So our next public hearing starts at 7:30, and we do have to wait until then to open that up.
We doing the new business?
Hmm? Yep. Vote to set a public hearing for a special permit application made by Kevin Andrade.
Is it in the book?
It's somewhere in here, it's after one of the yellow pages. So we don't have to read this, we just have to review it. He's made an application to construct a commercial building, used for retail use, redemption center and office space, at 11 Evergreen Circle, so that, that's in that same subdivision?
Across the street from the next application, yeah.
And you would like that on Wednesday, August 21st, at 7:30?
Yes. Or, actually, there's no public hearing scheduled for that date, so it could be 7:10 if the board preferred, it could be 7:20, I think 7:30 is just what is-
Is it August 21st?
August 21st at 7:10.
Separate meeting. Separate meeting, that's two weeks following our next meeting.
So be.
Is, do you want us to wait?
Well, you guys are just gonna, are we gonna view the whole plan, or you're just going to?
Absolutely, so we need to set the order of operations. I receive an application, I come to the board to request a specific public hearing date, I come up with the next possible public hearing date that we can meet the advertising deadlines on, that deadline, that would, I would have had to submit public hearing notifications to the paper today to make a meeting before that, so I've suggested the second meeting in August. And then, so you'll be sent the plans after we set the public hearing date in a future packet.
I'll ask this question, similar to Charlie, if I get the plans early, can I leave comments with you? Because I won't be here for that.
You can submit it to-
Yeah, would that work? Would that be allowed?
That's fine, and then you can miss one meeting under a public hear, one public hearing session, then the next one you can participate as long as you have viewed the documents and the testimony and sign that.
And sign a document filed with the clerk.
Sure, okay.
Probably, Rob, are you gonna be there that day?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so we'll have Rob pay attention too.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have Rob sit in, yeah.
Right, I won't seat him?
No.
Yeah, I think so, right.
Well, then, then-
I'm only missing one date.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, but he could pick up all the information.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and-
Okay, I appreciate it.
Rob can do that too, in case, you know.
Sure, should something happen.
Yeah, all right, so 7:10 on August 21st, do I have a motion to set-
So be.
There's, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and I got my bylaw, 174-25. Jack, do you gotta go?
I'm checking.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that.
That was a mutual aid ambulance coming.
All right.
The ambulance hit it back up.
Going to caution road.
I guess I can do that later. I'll do that later, all right. So there's that. Okay, so ba, in the rear part of your packet are the articles submitted to the Board of Selectmen for the October Town Meeting warrant. These are the articles that we have thus far, I believe there are 31 more articles coming, but they're not zoned, as far as I know, they're not zoning articles.
So 31 more than this, 31?
Yeah, the bylaw review committee, which has Meg Santos on it, Debbie Dammey, Ed Larkin, another nice gentleman, they are putting forth 31 amendments to our bylaw, so the zoning bylaws is part of, is a subset of our town bylaw. Some people call it the town code, so, but we'll let that come out of the town manager's office. I do have a copy of them, some of them are handwritten and I couldn't really understand, so I didn't want to-
I haven't seen them.
I don't want to pass them on, but one of them does address that deadline for zoning bylaws, moving it from July to August, which we already commented on, so, we can, we can modify that comment too, but, all right, so in here, I think there's two zoning bylaws, right?
Yep.
Have you looked at these, Evan?
I've only been, yeah, looked at our accessory apartments bylaw.
So there's the temporary seasonal sign bylaw, that got in there.
Oh, I didn't know that they submitted that.
Okay.
I wrote it, I didn't know that they submitted it.
They submitted it, it's, those are the only two.
Uh-huh?
Yeah, those are the only two, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, I think those are the only two zoning bylaws that are in here, proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw. So I have some correspondence with the Chair of the EDIC, Carol Sherman, about waiting on the signed bylaw, the temporary sign bylaw.
Okay.
But I will confirm that.
All right, at least it's been in the book though.
In the book.
That's Patty, she's good, man, I'm telling you.
Seen it, and the other one is the accessory apartment, so, that you guys discussed, and it's, the five-foot thing didn't get in here, right? Okay.
It did not.
It's only four pages, and I guess that was discussed Monday?
Yes.
That was on the agenda, does anybody want to-
Yeah, we discussed that, but I guess, I-
Does anybody want to talk about it?
Yeah, I have a, I have a problem not notifying the butters when you're putting up a separate apartment, that's, you know, separated, and not, because, you imagine, you have a house, you go, you know, close it down, you go back in the spring, and all of a sudden, there's apartment building right in your backyard and never got notified. I don't like that, I mean, I think you should notify your butters, and it's not written there the way it's written.
So you think that modification should be modified?
I think so, I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels.
I understand that you wouldn't want to be surprised, but say you went home for the winter and someone's got a, you know, a building permit to build, to tear down their house and build a new house there, they wouldn't have to, I mean-
They still have to notify them.
Have them notified, but-
Yeah, but you still have to get, you get notified, this, this thing, you don't have to get notified, it's just-
I think, if I may, the, the intention for making it a byright use is to simplify the process for a property owner to undergo this, and the triggers that require notice to a butters within 300 feet are processes that, uh-
I'm just saying for a separate-
So what, when I first approached an amendment to this and consider, because what, I think the big substantive difference about what we're proposing now as to what currently exists, is enabling an accessory apartment as a detached structure on the property. When I initially molded this over, I had considered separating out the uses as an attached, an attached accessory apartment would be a byright use, and you could, you could consider making a detached accessory apartment a separate use in the use table and making that a plan review or a special permit process.
Plan review, that's what we should have.
And then, so it is a more-
Still should go to plan review?
Because then it can make the apartment that are illegal, legal by going through the plan review.
So it's, that's an option, because I think, I think it's very important to, to, I think the biggest purpose and intent of this system is to simplify the ability to create new units, but I do understand that creating a detached structure is more obtrusive than one that is within the existing building envelope, so, I didn't propose it because I wanted to make it as simple as possible, but it's an option.
Jack, wouldn't you want to be able to find out all the illegal apartments, you can, for fire safety, like being a fireman, you know, because I know a couple apartments that I worked on, we put stoves, and then the building, I didn't realize it years ago, but then all of a sudden, the fire department come in to check the alarm, and those were illegal, and I had to rip them all out, and the people didn't, didn't know anything.
Well, I was building side complaining about that, because you can't have a kitchen in there.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's a lot of apartments that now have kitchen, they put a little kitchen, and we don't know nothing about them.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the middle, because I, I don't think what you're gonna see is someone building an apartment building beside you, because there can only be one apartment, and it can only have one or two bedrooms, so I don't think you're gonna be surprised by this big apartment building, and we kept the 15-foot distance anyway. So I'm kind of in the fence with the detached, I mean, I did inspection today on a detached accessory apartment that was approved by the ZBA, and the way they set it up was a garage that they converted over that already existed. But I, I mean, that's the thing, is you may have a garage that already exists, and because it's detached, you're gonna generate this notice to the neighbors where it's an already existing building. I can understand if you're saying they're building a new structure just to create-
A new structure, that's all I'm saying, a new structure.
It might raise some, but, but like you said, where you live, your lots are real tight to each other.
Oh, yeah.
So for someone to build a new structure is gonna be difficult. Where I live, my neighbor won't even notice it, so it, it depends, so I'm kind of in the middle with the detached.
I would like to see maybe just a new structure, not if it's a garage and you turn it over, it's detached.
One point I would, sorry, Jack.
I'm sorry.
The one point I'd like to stress, just before you continue to deliberate or make a decision on this, is that the design criteria for the unit is still pretty restrictive, it can't be less than 300 square feet, but it's, it can't, it had, detached would contribute to the minimum lot coverage or maximum lot coverage, and you're limited to 40% of the gross floor area of the principal structure, so if you had, if you're at a small lot and you're already at 20%, you can't build it, you just can't build one.
So, all right.
So you need the land area to begin with, so-
So, so it sounds like the Board of Selectmen have given us more time to work on this, is that what, we can, we can resubmit this with different-
Has anybody else found, I know Jack will, but Joe, uh-
I love special permits and I love notifying all the butters, so that's where I, any change towards that, I'm going to support. So it kind of sounds like there could be some, you know, there could be a compromise, a brand-new building, everybody's, you know, it has to be a special permit.
Brand-new building.
Yep.
I think it's a no. Can you, just to notify the butters that, about your property, not three hundred, or is that a...
If you may get a spec, if it's a special permit, you're, you're statutorily obligated to notify within three hundred feet.
If you just do plan review, you could, you just direct to butters, so...
Plan review, in-law, this, we would have to do a special permit, and they could find out, make all the other apartments legal, that are not now.
There were people in the room that night that had comments, so maybe we should have a workshop and let people know they can come and talk about it with us.
That sounds reasonable.
You want to do that?
I'm amiable to having some language in there that talks about new construction.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, I, I don't, I don't think we should overcomplicate this and seek a special permit in every single thing we do. That's what we're trying to do, is avoid all this extra stuff.
There were comments made about that one month time period.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think that we should vet that out in, with the residents before it goes on the warrant. It'd be a shame, you know what I mean, to have it go down because somebody, you know, di, disagreed with the one month but would compromise for three months, do you know what I mean? So, um, I did receive some comments about that one month.
From whom?
People that were here that night, there was like seven people here.
Could you forward those to us?
I didn't get it, I, I, I think that we should ha, have them back and have them do a workshop with the residents about that. Is everybody brave enough to do it?
I don't know, it's kind of complicated though.
Can I respond to the, the timeline que, or the...
Yeah.
The, uh, I, my, my general thought is, um, it's very, not unexpected that people push back against the one month. I think three months is a decent enough compromise, but anymore, and you're really restricting the seasonal worker that is a, a pretty, pretty big part of our seasonal workforce. So I would hate to be, for that to be overly restrictive, because I think six, going somewhere like six months, which I'm sure we're going to get comments on, is too much.
So why don't, do you want to put this back on the agenda in our next meeting or the meeting afterwards?
Um...
In, in, I don't know.
Well, we do, we do that, are we removing it from the warrant?
No, I think, um...
No, I think they gave us more time to, to resubmit it.
Maybe put it till next week or the next meeting.
Because you're here the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And we can assign it.
The, the Selectmen won't execute the warrant until early in August, so that gives time to request amendments that are within the scope of the original submission between now and then.
Okay.
So I'll email Andrew and let him know we're going to meet on it again. Right, I mean, I do think that we did a good job getting it in, but if, if they're going to give us a little leeway and we can tweak it a little bit, and, um, I, I believe the people that came here that night came to the hack training, the Housing Assistance Corporation training on accessory dwelling units in Mashpee, so I think I can get the word out that we'll, we'll, you know, take comment that night. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Because I think some of them felt bad that, um, you, I think they had expected it to be a public hearing, whereas it was a public meeting, but we can put it on the agenda as a workshop, and that we'll be taking public comment. Does that sound good?
As for the next meeting, August seventh?
Yes.
Yeah.
And can you, um...
My one question is...
Put this in true red line, because you, I and Jay are additions?
Yes.
And they just come in bold?
Yes. The thought, uh, do, it doesn't, do the, Selectmen have a date certain about when they're going to execute the warrant? Because if it's, if we have a meeting on August seventh and they execute the warrant shortly thereafter, it's not a lot of time to amend the submitted by law, you know what I'm saying?
Well, if we miss the deadline, we miss the deadline. You know, we've already submitted it, so we've met that deadline. I'll, I'll let Andrew know what we're doing, and if he tells me to get out of town, Mary, then I won't put it on the agenda for the next time, but I have a feeling that he will.
Yeah, it sounds good.
I hope we can, bet, do this the next meeting though, I mean, I, I...
Okay, all right.
I mean, but I don't want to make, like Jack, make a big problem out of this.
All right.
I'm happy if we know that.
I'm rather ten yard away here.
New building.
All right.
All right, let's move.
All right, so seeing the appointed time has arrived, the Chair opens up the seven-thirty meeting. The project proponent is Modi LLC. Modi LLC has filed an application for special permit to construct a coffee shop with facilities for processing and packaging coffee along with a future industrial tenant at ten Evergreen Circle, Lot B, Map nineteen, Block ten, as required by Section one seventy-four dash twenty-five I sixteen and Section one seventy-four four dash forty-five dash six of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. The property is located in the C-three zoning district and is within the light industrial overlay district. So why doesn't the project proponent come up, and I'll, while I'm, while you're coming up, I'll read the public hearing notice into the record. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven-thirty in the ma, in the, sorry, in the Wacoia Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, first floor, sixteen Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass, zero to six four nine, to consider an application made by Modi LLC to construct a coffee shop with facilities for processing and packaging coffee along with a future industrial tenant at ten Evergreen Circle, Map nineteen, Block ten, as required by Section one seventy-four dash twenty-five I sixteen and Section one seventy-four dash forty-five point six of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. The property is located in the C-three zoning district and is, and is, is in, la, is, and is within the light industrial overlay district. The public hearing notice was submitted by Mary Wagem, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates were Friday, June twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, and Friday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. So what I typically do, and you can have as many chairs up there as you want, I typically acknowledge the project proponent, let them have time to do a presentation. I go through preliminary comments by board members, we go to staff and our engineer, our consulting engineer. Then I open it up to the public and then come back to the board members and any lingering questions from staff and engineers. I do want to let, let everybody know that comments are made through the Chair, um, so, um, if somebody in the public has a comment for the planning board, you make it to me. I either, um, you know, send it to the project proponent, the engineer, our staff, another board member, or I take it under advisement. But at this time, I'd like to recognize the project proponent, and people do watch from home, so if you can take the mic out of its stand and just talk right into it, if you see the white light come here, that means you're not talking loud enough.
Okay.
Hi.
I'm Jan Agabek, Cape Cod Coffee, also Modi LLC, or McNe Inc., and a bunch of other names, but it all falls under Cape Cod Coffee. So as you know, we're currently your neighbor, and we have a roasting facility, we've been in that building since eighty-six. Company's been around since nineteen seventy, and we have outgrown the building, the space, the location, and so forth. We're also in historical district, so I'm not going to go into that long chat about it, but we are moving down the street, about one point four miles, to this new overlay district that will allow us to continue doing roasting and allow us to continue doing what we're doing today, which is serve coffee, having people sit outside and so forth. We've obviously expanded on the size of the building and the things we're going to be able to offer, but it's very much in line with what we're already doing, literally next to Town Hall. So I'm going to pass it on to, uh, the whole team here, we've got a, a big team here today, make sure we can answer all the questions, and let them walk through the proposed layout and so forth.
Okay.
Any questions from me?
I'll ask them, yeah, I'm just going to let you guys have the floor for a little bit.
Sure, my name is Rich Tabazinski, I'm with Atlantic Design Engineers, and we are the civil engineers, surveyors for the project, which, and put together the set of site plans that you have in front of you. We also coordinated the landscaping and lighting plan that was submitted with you. Those weren't completed by our office, but we coordinated that on, and submitted those along with the application. But to run through the site plan fairly quickly for you, this is the sheet three of the plan set that you have, and we colored it up to clarify the building location, which is shown here in yellow, along with the gray areas, obviously, the, the parking that comes in off of Evergreen Circle.
Can I just stop you for one second? When you look at your plans inside your packet, they're like Xerox funny, you might want to rip them out to flip them. Do you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Some of them, that, it just, it just got flipped funny when, all right, so...
I have full-size plan sets too, if you are so inclined to look at those.
So, all right, so you're looking at page three.
Yes, this is a colored-up version of, of page three. So the, the gray areas here, the light gray areas are the access roads coming in off Evergreen Circle and the proposed parking in, along Evergreen and then on the side of the building, and then there's a loading and, and parking area to the, to the rear. This is Route one thirty, Main Street, and this location here. The blue is the above-ground infiltration vegetated basin for stormwater, and the green area that we've highlighted here is basically going to be a combination of lawn and natural area and gre, green space and landscaped areas that, I have the landscape plan to show you also, but basically anything in there is what we consider natural, a green, green space area. The parking requirements, we do meet, we've run through the table of, of requirements, and based on the use that's in the building, we need thirty-four spaces, and we're providing, and that makes of that, fifty spaces. Like I said, in, um, there's about thirty-one spaces here, eight towards the rear, more for like employees in this area, and then visitors would be parking on these two areas here.
So that's shown in your upper right corner, there's a chart?
Yes, right here.
That says required, and then, it's, there's a column that says required and a column that says provided, okay.
Exactly, yep, on the upper right-hand corner. And we're also showing a couple handicap spots right in the front entrance of the building, which are the, the number of, of spots required by ADA and the Architectural Barriers Board. A trash receptacle, closed-in dumpster is in the ri, right rear corner over here. Sidewalk pedestrian access from the parking areas to the, to the front of the building in this location here. And, and two access points off of Evergreen Circle. We've proposed some stop signs and stop lines at those locations, not like, this is going to be a very busy road, but we felt it was appropriate to put those in those locations. Loading would be in the rear, uh, location here, where trucks would pull in and back in and then, then be able to pull out onto Evergreen, uh, Evergreen Circle. So, the building is, in this location meets all the setback requirements. There's, the front yard setback is a twen, is seventy-five feet from Evergreen Circle and, and Route one thirty, and we meet that requirement a little over, about seventy-nine feet from the right-of-way of Route one thirty, and we're about seventy-eight feet from the right-of-way of Evergreen Circle. And beyond that, the side and rear yards are, are twenty feet minimum, and we've met that with, uh, the building itself, but also the covered porch and the covered pavilion that are in the rear of the building. Those are shown basically on the architectural plans that we submitted, but the main building is, is here with a covered porch surrounding it, and that kind of expands out into a covered pavilion on, at the rear of the property. So, uh, in terms of landscaping, I will just switch this over to landscaping plan. Just, I have to tell you that it's, the landscape plan is flipped from the site plan. Uh, Route one thirty is over here, and Evergreen is down here, so it's kind of like...
Kind of like annoying.
I know. It was too late, too late to change it when we, when we got it back from the landscaper and, uh, in terms of the submittal, so it is basically mirrored from what the site plan set is, so I just wanted to clarify that for you. But in, in terms of the landscaping, I won't get into all the species and types and everything there, but generally what we're proposing along Evergreen and Main Street, Route one thirty, is a series of street trees that will have a, a small planting bed near them. Uh, also some landscaping around the building and, and some of the features that are being proposed, such as the fire pit and outdoor seating areas. So there'll, there's some landscaping beds and trees proposed in those, those areas along the front, rear, and the side of the building, and then the rest would be considered a lawn area. There's also some plantings in the parking lot islands and in, in along the front of the building. That would be for, um, just general aesthetics in, in, in the front and also in the, in the rears, a couple of trees there. The basin itself in the, is just going to be a grassed basin, we weren't proposing any special plantings along that, that area here. Again, this would all be grassed lawn area. We're proposing a, a, a fence along the northern, or, I'm sorry, that's the southern, now that the plan's flipped, the southern lot line that, that is located here, and then a split rail fence in this location here that kind of keeps this, uh, in, enclosed in the front of the building, which is for some outdoor use, that if you need more information on that, Jan can explain exactly what's going to be happening here in the outdoor area in, in the future, so... But that's generally what the landscaping is, is all about. There is also building elevations I can get into, or we can save that for the end. But basically, the site plan that we've put together, uh, the remaining sheets that, that were... Stormwater system, the underground utilities such as water, there's a couple of water services coming in off of Evergreen Circle. Uh, the septic system is shown on one of the plan sheets, that'll be in the... It'll be a denitrification system in accordance with the Board of Health requirements. And then, in terms of stormwater, we have two, two, two separate systems. There's a separate system for the roof itself, which will go into underground leaching channels, and the parking lot will, will be, go into several catch basins that will discharge to this above-ground basin, and that has an over thirty underground basins in this vicinity in the front of the building. We also, we still have to go to the Board of Health, get their approval, obviously, for the septic system, but we feel that the stormwater system has been designed properly in accordance with your, with your requirements. So, we did receive the peer review, and I, I can address those comments, but I guess we'll wait to, to hear from your consultant first, and then we can address it at that time.
I think you should do the elevations.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, generally, these are the elevations that were submitted along with the detail of the sign that, that will be out in the, the front corner of the property. And, um, Mike, do you want to come in and just talk about these briefly, I guess? But we've provided elevations for each sort, side of the buildings.
My name is Mike Hillsinger, I'm with Conserve Group, we're the architects and builders for the project. I think that you'll find these elevations are pretty similar to what you saw in the informal meeting. What we've done is changed the window detail, which was something that was requested last time to take away the, the linear window that appeared under the eve here, and replaced it with four punch windows. We've added some decorative trellis on the side of the building, just to sort of break up the, the larger wall at the same time. And then around on the backside where the overhead door was, there was a comment about bollards, which we've added as well. Aside from that, the building is essentially the same as before. The plan is for a, a black roof, gray siding, some of which will be a board and batten look on, towards the front of the building, and then black, uh, window trim and frame, just to try to give it a nice sort of country farm feel.
So, um, which, just go through which elevation will be seen from what road?
Okay, so Route one thirty is here, it says east elevation. And this is sort of that, sort of farmhouse-style farmer's porch in front, eaved roof, uh, and so that's the Route, uh, Route one thirty side. so that's the Route, uh, Route 130 side. And then, uh, this would be, just immediately next to it is the west elevation, which would be the rear.
So there's, I think there's a couple of people in the audience that would like to, to just turn, just, you're blocking them. Just turn it a little bit, so.
Let me just pull back a little bit here. So, again, Route 130 view. This is the rear of the building, it's a little bit more plain, it's not really seen very much. South elevation, which, if you know the roadway much, would be the opposite side of the access road down to the side. This would be the side that's viewed from, uh.
Evergreen.
Evergreen, sorry. Evergreen Street. So we've really tried to dress up the two faces that will face the two roadways the most, and then the other two are a little bit more nondescript.
So, if, if, does any from, anyone from the audience that wants a set of plans? We have extra, if you wanna take them. So, Rob, do you have anything to?
Well, I think you, to answer my question, I, could you, for the record, which is the front of the building facing 130?
Okay, for 130, it is the east elevation, and it's noted on the plan, Route 130.
And that's the front of the building?
It is a corner lot, so it's, you can argue that, but that is the front facing the major roadway, yes.
And the parking access or the road driveway is on Evergreen.
Correct.
Which is coming in at, let's say, the side of the building?
Yes.
Okay, I like that.
Okay.
I, I just have a question, maybe Charlie can answer it. You got the septic system and the leachate fields, uh, factored where the traspins are, and you got the swill on the other side of it. If there was ever overflow, would that, would that damage the septic system? I mean, that's supposed to be a hundred year, but I'm thinking if ice built up, then it got warm and we had a heavy rain. Seems kinda close to me there.
Which sheet are you looking at, Dennis? Sheet four?
Sheet five.
Five?
Yeah.
What you, uh.
It's only twenty-six feet from.
Yes, but that happens to be the point where the runoff goes into the initial sediment basin for the, the surface disposal area. It then travels away from the onsite sewage system to a point in that elongated section in the middle.
Yep.
Then if it gets up to a certain elevation, it actually discharges through a pipe that's in the slope to the subsurface system is set, looks like a checkerboard area.
Yep.
You don't see that.
No, okay.
The only thing you'd see would be a couple of, uh, solid.
I see them now, but I, I.
That's where it overflows to.
Alright.
So it would not be headed in the direction of the subsurface system for onsite sewage. They've also maintained a minimum twenty-five foot setback, which is requirement, I believe, through Title V.
Yes.
For any portion of the drainage system being away from the subsurface infiltration for the septic.
Alright.
So they've complied with that.
Yeah, that's all I had, I mean, I would just.
For now, yeah, okay. Joe?
I just had a question that probably more in Jack's mind is that I thought the fire department should have access to all four sides of the building, but maybe that's, I, I, it just doesn't seem.
Well, by code, 'cause it's gonna be a sprinkled building, by code, you need to have two-hundred-and-fifty feet. By having a sprinkled building increases it from one-fifty to two-fifty. So as long as from the pa- pa- parking area or the access where the fire department goes, as long as it's two-hundred-and-fifty feet to that furthest point or less, it meets the code. Which this would. That was my question, what are the building dimensions? Do you have that?
So we'll go to Jack.
No, I just have, uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have one more question. And that's the, uh, the sign that you have for the building? The street sign?
Mm-hmm.
It exceeds the, uh, the twenty square feet, and I don't see a, a height on here for the, the street sign.
You did your math, huh?
Yes.
So I guess somewhere in our zoning bylaw, it limits the, the square.
Sign we have now.
Yep.
Is gonna move down one, one point, four miles, and instead of saying three forty-eight at the top, it will say ten. Other than that, it's the same sign, that's already been approved by town and county.
Okay, but, well, if it's been approved, but it's, uh, uh.
So.
It says, well, this is the thing that lets you off the hook, I guess. Any new sign exceeding squen- twenty square feet. So if this is your original sign.
I don't know, well, well, but that's.
It's a new location.
That's, um.
It's a new location.
Starting a list. So you're gonna see that we're gonna ask a lot of questions. I just, I guarantee you, your project is gonna end up being better after this review.
Yeah.
I guarantee you, so just be patient with us. Okay, so I have that, I, I have that under a potential list of relief that you'll be asking for, and then we decide whether we're gonna grant that or not.
Yeah, one of them is the, the height, the height of the sign. And the square foot of the, the sign.
Can I ask a question, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a, a square footage maximum on signs, or do we calculate based on the, on the building frontage?
No, it, there's a square footage.
Because a lot of signs in town would be much larger than twenty square feet.
I, we're about through sign review format comments right now, and I've been told that it's based on square footage of the front of the building, so.
I think it's a ratio.
That, this is a street sign.
Yeah, that's on, on, on the wall sign.
Yeah.
So what section of the bylaw are you looking at, Joe? One-seventy-four dash?
My point is, a monument sign of twenty square feet is very, very small.
Pardon me?
Four by five.
It's very small. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I, I would also like some clarity about our signage regulations and, and maximums and minimums, so I'm just opining on.
Alright, I've got it, I've got it on the list.
Yeah, the square footage on the front of the building, the sign can't exceed ten percent of the frontage. That's where the ten percent comes in. The street sign is different.
Has it changed in the last four years?
No.
We put that sign in three and a half years ago, next to you guys.
Jan, if you, you'll just have to make sure you use a microphone when, when you address the board.
So the sign we currently have, which is on your drawing, was approved by the town of Massey three and a half years ago to go in. So if the regulation hasn't changed in the last three and a half years, I'm confused why it now is an issue, so that's.
No, it's just coming up as an issue, but if we find the documents or, uh.
I'll make sure we clarify it before the next public hearing.
Okay, I just, yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm on second.
Okay. Okay. So, um, I'm making typically what we ask for, um, when we're doing special permits, is if we find something that you're gonna need relief for, whether it's, you know, a waiver, or a variance, or some other type of relief, um, you know, we're gonna ask for an official list, uh, from you about that, so the sign might be one of them. So, um, I, I, when we get to Charlie, Charlie does have a report. Have you, have you seen the, the report from Charlie?
I have not.
Okay.
I, I have.
You have, um, so he talks a lot about buffers, um, so those are things that we might have to put on the list, um, for requesting relief. I do, um, I, I believe your parking does meet the required parking, looks like you exceed it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, who, let me ask this question. Who do you think would be your, the, the type of future industrial tenant that you would have at this site? I'm just wondering, do you have too much parking, and is that, you know, impacting some of your buffers? That's why I'm asking. But, um, do you have somebody in mind that you'd be renting the space to?
Are you talking about the fifteen-hundred square foot, the back of the building, renting it to, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Other than that, it's occupied by us.
Okay. Did I see somewhere that?
Cape Cod Coffee, out of the almost ten-thousand square feet, we're occupying eighty-five-hundred, maybe it's eighty-four-hundred-and-ninety-nine to keep the commission out of it. So what it is, so it's fifteen-hundred square foot that is potentially available for a tenant to rent out. So nothing has been signed at this point in time.
Do you have any idea who that tenant would be, or what type of tenant?
Nothing has been signed, so right now it's all speculation.
Would it be a food tenant?
Uh, right now, I don't have anybody signed, uh, so that is, right now, we would all speculate.
Would you, would you be willing to have some type of condition that it's compatible food-wise with your production that you have now? So.
Define compatible food.
Something that doesn't have toxic waste processing next to your wonderful coffee?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, okay, I just, when you say food, I always worry.
There's some, there's some uses allowed that you, in this area, that you probably wouldn't want in your same, same building, so maybe we could.
Yeah, we, we want something in there that goes along with everything else we're doing.
That might be a condition that I'll propose, is that it's compatible use with respect to health and safety.
And if we can't find anybody in there that is compatible with what we would like to be, we are gonna use it ourselves.
Okay.
An accessory apartment in there?
Well, our cold brew's really kicking off, so maybe we're putting in a keg and a cold brew, uh, line in there. So we got plenty of options for ourselves to use in there if we don't find the right tenant. So we're not leased, the fifteen-hundred square feet is not gonna make a dent one way or the other on the financial plans of Cape Cod Coffee. So if we don't find the right fit for what we think is right for that area, we will not be leasing it out, we will occupy it ourselves. The other eighty-five-hundred square feet-ish is all Cape Cod Coffee.
You'll, you'll hear a comment from Charlie that the landscaping plan and the site plan don't match. I found it difficult to analyze the landscaping plan because it didn't have dimensions on it. So I'd like to see some dimensions, um, on the landscaping plan. Lastly, and Charlie, I don't, you might be able to help me with this. Our last town meeting, was it our last town meeting? We modified the bylaw that applies to this overlay district. So I left a copy, uh, and I gave you a copy. I didn't have enough copies for the engineer. It's the piece of paper that says Modi on the top. So it was passed in May, it hasn't been approved by the Attorney General. Does it apply to this project? Evan and I were thinking of going forward and just, until we have a determination whether it applies or not, just to keep it in our review.
I haven't seen it, so I'll have to review that.
Okay, so it, it should say Article 25, handwritten Modi on the top, it was right on top of your pile.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if you have it now in front of you? I get, oh, okay.
And we've discussed these additions too in some of our preliminary meetings.
So the outdoor seating part of it and being able to eat outside is not make it or break it whether we're gonna go down the street or not. It's a nice-to-have, it's not a must-have. So if the Attorney General decides that on Evergreen Circle, number ten, you should not be allowed to sit outside and eat something, whether it's a wafnut, or a muffin, or whatever it might be, we can live with that.
Well, I think that it's allowed, I think it's gonna be allowed, but it's, it needs to have screening.
Screening on the, when you're sitting outside?
Yeah. So Article 27 that passed, accessory uses, outdoor dining shall be allowed in commercial districts as an accessory use to an allowed eating place, serving food and beverage, provided that visual screening be required in any area abutting residential zone, which this does. Such screening shall consist of a solid fence, wall, mature hedge, or other screen-type planting of such height as to screen any diners from said residence zone. I, I think if you look at your landscaping plan, you're on the way to do that.
So what, what do you mean by a screen?
It could be a stockade fencer.
Buck screen, I'm like, there's no way you're gonna put a bunch of screens on, okay.
It could, it'd be easily accommodated with a, with a landscape.
You're very close.
Yeah, yeah, well, then we don't have an issue. I thought you meant everybody outside had to have a. A net on it, yeah, I'm like, okay.
Right, and then the other piece is, um, it's supposed to comply with the design guidelines for Cape Cod, designing the future to honor the past. That has several chapters in it, one on landscaping and one on architectural design. I, I think you're gonna get there, but I think we need to put some type of review how they, how this project complies, um, in some way to that.
Then they already go to design review?
No, they already did go to design review, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, and, and it did, and that's why I was asking before, if design review has an architect on it. It might be something that we, um, maybe we can get through this quickly, you know, but in the future we might wanna send it to design review for that specific comment. I don't know if the, the designer or the land, the architect that's on design review is comfortable doing that, but that might be a tweak that we might wanna do in the future.
If he, if there are comments, he, he has made them.
Can I offer one?
At the minutes.
But I don't think he's done it compared to this book, the guidelines from the Cape Cod Commission.
Just one, one, one note, I, I went to the design review meeting, 'cause it was right before plan review, um, and I did mention, eh, and made sure our designing review committee was aware that, uh, the planning board submitted the amendment to the, to the zoning bylaw that was approved, and that, uh, projects within the light industrial overlay district would at a future time be required to be compliant with those guidelines. And you'll see, and I'm not looking at the elevations now, but, you know, the front porch elevation adds, um, variations in the building wall, it adds some, some texture. There's one long blank facade wall, I think it's on the east elevation on Evergreen Circle, um, and the Cape Cod Commission decide guidelines very specific about if you have a long blank wall, you can either add some articulation to the building wall, you can break up that massing with landscaping. Upon Miles's suggestion, they included the arbers to kind of break up that mass.
The arbers, you know, I, I, I think you're the, you know, they just don't want big square buildings with no variation in the roofline, varying masses for big building, big ma- masses of buildings, sometimes modulation. I, I, I think we're gonna be able to get through it, but we have to put something in the file saying, like a finding that we're okay.
The point of my just saying that was that, um, I've always worked with their team with the, with the concept of achieving compliance with those guidelines.
So, um. I already went to plan review. And I think that's it at this time.
Jack? First off, can we get a copy of that, or is it accessible online from the Cape Cod Commission?
Copy of what? Yes, I will forward them to you in digital form and provide you hard copies.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
On the plan, it lists rope barrier, and I know I heard someone said that it was gonna be a split rail fence.
Barriers just on the porch portions, sort of like, you know, you can undo it to do access or, or put it back up to block access.
Oh, wait, can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
In the front, it, um, of the building, looking at 130, it has overhead doors. Was that, is that just a, um, an aesthetic thing that you would have the doors open to let air in, or? I think you have to press the little button there to get the green light to go on.
There we go.
Okay, so in the summer, you were saying?
Yeah, in summer months, the overhead door can be raised up, similar to opening a patio door, except that by using an overhead door, it just creates a clear space without.
You're not thinking of loading and unloading there?
No, 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 it's, no, strictly to create an, an open air environment.
It's the same thing they do with knockable.
Exactly, exactly.
The rope comment reminded me of that, okay, thank you.
So the solid line that comes off that is a split rail fence that goes all the way around?
Then it becomes split rail, yes.
This may be, maybe something more for Charlie, but it's just something I think of, as far as egress pathways for people that are gonna be in that area.
Mm-hmm.
How's the flow gonna go there? So people around the back patio, for them to leave their property should there be emergency, how do they flow out of there? It's not clear on this.
Yeah, let me just, let me just go to the plan, if you don't mind up here.
So you're looking at the landscape?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking, I'm looking at L1.
Okay, L1. Cause there's a fire pit back there, too.
There's two fire pits.
Okay.
Right.
If you have L1, and be, probably the landscape, you get the landscape plan there, you see it better what I'm talking about. what I'm talking about.
Good idea. Yeah, good idea, thanks, Mike. Uh, yeah, the, there's a split rail fence along this area here, and then there's a rope barrier at the, at the, that's at the covered porch area here, so.
So if people are on that covered rear patio, that-
The pavilion.
The, the south side, right. Where's the egress pathway to get out, get off that property?
There's a gate right there.
There's a gate in some stepping stone exit out towards the parking area to the rear here, but there's a gate right there.
All right.
So I think, I think this plan needs more labels. I would have never known that was a gate. Oh, there it is, six-foot gate, okay, sorry, go ahead.
The gas, are those gas, gas, natural gas fueled fire pits? I don't know, until I see the building itself, but I, I don't think that's what we look at, right? On the plan, we don't look at the building design itself.
Yeah, I think the project proponent would, would benefit from any comment that you would-
Yeah, I would love to have the dimensions of the building itself. I don't see anywhere on the plan where it actually shows me the size of the building.
I'm sorry, the, the building itself overall is 162 feet by 60 feet.
162 by 62?
Yeah, that's at the, at the greatest most dimensions.
162 by 60, you said?
162 by 62.
Square footage would be less than that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, 162 by 60, you're right.
I don't defer my comments because I want to listen to you.
Joe?
I believe my two questions were answered, one was the frontage of the roads, and doing the design review yesterday was the signs that Joe brought up, so those are my two, and I'm all set.
Evan, do you want to?
One important, I think, piece of, of this application is going to be a request for the board to waive the buffer requirement from the nearest residential parcel to, from 100 feet to 50 feet. Staff is required to notice those abutters of the date in which the planning board is going to discuss that waiver. So I'm, I'm asking the board if they're going, if they'd like to entertain the waiver. Can we do so at the next meeting, so I can notify the abutters of that specific request tomorrow, so that the board can either grant or not grant that waiver at the August 7th meeting.
So is everybody here August 7th? Right, okay, so-
And I'll just read to you that section.
How about we, we don't vote on any waivers tonight, we put that off till August 7th? Is that good?
I just wanted to know if the board is, will entertain that request.
I see no problem with that.
So I will notify-
We're going to, Charlie, and we've asked you for some more information, I'm fine.
Um, I'm just, I'm required to notice those abutters of, that you're considering that specific reduction, so I'm going to do so tomorrow for the August 7th meeting.
I see.
Yes.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
I see, do they, how, how much notice do they need?
They need 14 days, so we have more than enough time before that, that 7th meeting.
And do we have to, do we have to give a, any other waivers?
I don't believe so.
I, I'm not sure-
That's the only thing I'm required to notice on-
Charlie knows this or not, if the buffer reduction is a waiver or a variance?
In this scenario, the zoning specifically states- This is Standards for Development in C3 Districts, 174 25.1, subsection 4. Depth, excuse me, I'll just read the whole thing. Except for driveway access to the site approved by the planning board, and notwithstanding any other provisions of this chapter, any structures, clearing, or other development on the site shall be located at least 100 feet from any residentially zoned parcel outside of the district, and there shall be a 100-foot buffer area left in its undisturbed natural state adjacent to any residentially zoned buffer parcel outside this district. Depth of said buffer or building setback may be reduced to 50 feet for lots of less than two acres in an area upon a favorable boat of the planning board after review and recommendation to the board by the design review committee. The owners of such residentially zoned parcels shall be notified by certified mail at least 14 days in advance of any meeting which the planning board is to consider such a reduction in the buffer area building setback. Since this plan presented to the design review committee and brought to the board is contingent upon that waiver, I'm, I'm requesting that I be empowered to do that mailing first thing tomorrow morning.
Right, because, because sometimes when we do the, I've seen in the past when we've done public hearing notices, the list of waivers goes out at the same time, and that must be why, is because some have to be noted, okay.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
So the buffer plan shown here, or so you're right adjacent to the May Institute, doesn't really outline other than a six-foot fence. Do you have any other buffer that's listed along that south side? Or is it just a fence?
Just a fence.
Just a fence, yep.
I just have some concerns based on the clientele that are May Institute, and I know it's, that happens to be the tenant that's there now. And the clientele that are there, I think a buffer more than just a fence might be a little bit better. I'm just-
Do you think more than a split rail fence, is that what you're-
Well, it looks like it says six-foot fence, it's just a six-foot seat fence.
Yes, that one's a six-foot fence, sorry.
I, I just, I'm just talking, I'm not saying put a restriction on it, but you might want to have something more substantial, I mean, Charlie may have some add to this anyway.
Along this line here?
Yeah, that's the May Institute, I'm not sure if you're familiar with what that property is, but, sound and noise, there are challenged individuals who go there for training to assist them to, to move them into the workforce. They have a lot of medical conditions and challenges, and so noises and things like that can cause issues relative to what may be going on. Now, they may not be, but with outside seating and stuff like that, that may generate some, some challenges. So I'm just thinking about the buffer being more enhanced, but Charlie may have more to add to that, so.
Do they have head injuries?
There are all kinds of things there.
George? Oh, we, okay, okay. Evan, did you have anything else besides that?
I, I have a minor question. On two pages after your elevation sheet, there's a sheet, RAB, has to do with lighting.
Yes.
And all the lighting details, very nice. There's one set of lights that are closest to the dumpsters that really do not shed a lot of light on the dumpsters, and employees at night emptying trash or something probably would like to see a little more light in that area.
Understood, yeah, I think that pole could be shifted more to the-
Left.
To the left, yeah.
But then that vacates some parking areas, so.
It would be, it's located about right here, we could shift it to the left here, or it really-
Yeah, that can be handled with the fixtures that are on the light pole, because they are directional, so we can use a different head style that will throw light a little bit further if we need to-
That was my-
Change that, that's simple. Sure.
All right, is that going to change the lighting plan significantly?
No, it's just a matter of where the light is focused.
Okay, all right.
I just had one last item pursuant to Rob's comment about what is the front of the building. The zoning is very clear about buildings in C3 districts with frontage along Route 130. That side facing Route 130 shall be considered the front for, according to the zoning bylaw. So we meet that as well.
Okay, Charlie. Oh, did you, okay, sorry. Do we have any extra copies of the letter that Charlie prepared?
I have mine. I have two copies, does anyone need one?
I think the owner, property-
You guys have seen this, right?
I have a copy, yes.
This is a-
Charlie Rowley. It's four pages, so it's, these are- All right, go ahead, Charlie.
I think that there are some major things that you've already discussed to some degree that I found when I went through the site location and some of the details of the site itself. And I guess perhaps start with the two items listed, one and two on page one. When you go to footnote 14 of section 17431 for the land space requirements, it says that you need a 10-foot buffer, either natural or something on an approved landscape plan for the rear and sidelines in the commercial zoning districts. So if you look at the site plan, say either five or four, you'll notice that the clearing limits are basically right to the boundary of the lot. So if we're not going to have a natural 10-foot buffer, then there needs to be some buffer of 10 feet in width that's enhanced with landscaping in order to meet compliance with the bylaw.
All right.
The fence that you talked about runs all the way from Route 130 to a point about, a little better than halfway across the back of the building, and makes a turn and, and connects up with the building. The second portion of the setback requirements has to do with the buffer in front of Route 130. And this is separate from the bylaw that you said that you had no problem with making adjustment with 100 to 50 feet, because it says that there needs to be a 50-foot undisturbed natural buffer along Route 130, or it's west of Great Neck Road, which- If you look on sheets either four or five, you'll notice that there's a long swirling line that runs right through the center of the area that's between the building and Route 130. That's a contour line. And it changes the grade in there where that little hole is, it's in the corner of the lot, as much as six feet. In other places, the change in elevation is roughly two. If you remember some of the discussions that we had in previous projects, when you start putting fill material over a stalk of a tree to any great depth, you're going to end up killing the tree. It also means that you're going to have to have grading in that buffer zone. So it seems to me that there needs to be some adjustment if it's going to be in compliance with that footnote 14, that you can't be regrading that front 50 feet.
So this is like their landscaping plan would have to-
Well, more, more than just the landscaping plan, Mary. On the site plan itself, it talks about a regrading of that whole front piece, which to my mind, I know in the landscape plan, it says that that whole area is going to be lawn. You can't do that without erasing the natural buffer, which the section of the bylaw says you need to keep. So you need to address that in some fashion. I'm not sure whether it can be waived under this application, or whether it's a section of the bylaw that needs a variance from the zoning bylaw. So that's one issue. The other issues with respect to the buffers are against the back line where the fence is, and also the sideline where the drainage area is. The drainage area is to be loamed and seeded. I suppose the board could say that because of its irregular shape and the contouring that they've done, that is, is a landscaped area. It doesn't have any other vegetation applied to it with the exception of the loam and seed. So I guess that's a determination the board would have to make with respect to that. The last aspect of it, which I think is important, is with respect to the driveways themselves where they enter from Evergreen Circle. I put the template that has always been used for the last, I can't believe it, it was done in 2002 for the fire department, for the tower to make access to this property. You cannot negotiate either one of those turns coming off of Evergreen, Evergreen with that tower without running over the curb that's being proposed. The closest one to Route 130, if that entrance was simply slid toward 130, and I don't have a dimension in front of me, but possibly 25 feet, something like that, so that that little island connector that's right at the return was made wider, I believe the truck could make the turn, because then you wouldn't have that sharp reverse turn that they have to make to get into where the parking is. I think that can be accomplished. The second one would be to increase the radius of the inside of that turn that's on the most southerly entrance. Those two changes would, I think, accommodate the apparatus without any problem. It does not, however, address the internal turning, turning movements of the apparatus within the parking area if they make a turn to try and get to the rear, or if they try to make a turn to come back out again. I haven't addressed those internal circulation movements sufficient. It's probably something that should be left to the fire department to look at a little more closely, but that whole thing really controls the ultimate shape of the design of the site. So I think until those particular issues are addressed in some way, it's going to be hard to say, well, yeah, the rest of the site's okay.
Okay.
In spite of the landscaping, in spite of everything else that's being done, which I really don't have too many objections to, I mean, I think they've done a good job.
You have to use a microphone.
What impact what they've, what they've designed here.
So the fire chief of MASP has actually, so Mr. Phelan's boss has actually reviewed these plans and was okay with the layout. I believe Evan was there at that review as well.
He's sitting on plan review.
I copied Chief Rulo with this set of plans when I submitted the file to the planning board, so I'm not sure that he's had a chance to address my comment. He may have seen the plan, but I don't know that he's seen my comments with respect to the turning movements.
I actually think, if I may interject, I think he made an assumption that the turning radiuses were okay based on this plan. So he hadn't tested it or read Charlie's thing yet, so I don't think he's aware that the turning radius may be an issue. So I can touch base with him.
Should, should we have Charlie?
Actually, why don't we have Charlie touch base with him?
Would you mind calling the police chief?
Fire chief.
The fire chief?
No, no problem.
Yeah, okay.
He did email me back and thanked me for the comments, but he didn't make any comments with respect to them particularly.
And what we usually like is to have the fire chief give us something in writing, so we can throw it in the file.
I'll email him tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, so you think that we, you want them to address those now before we go on, or?
No, I think there are, there are other aspects of this that can be addressed-
Okay.
Now, and then we can deal with that later on.
Okay.
Going down to the site plans on sheet three, the site layout, there is one additional aspect, I think, unless Evan has addressed it, and he may have given a comment that he suggested that the front view is on Route 130 and not Evergreen Circle.
Yes.
I assume that where the building actually faced where the front door was would be the front door, suggesting that maybe the parking had to be located some other place than where it is, but the bylaw gives the planning board latitude to allow that to be as shown. I don't see how you could change it anyway, because the front setback off of Evergreen Circle has to be 75 feet for the building. That gives you no room in the back to put the parking. So you might, perhaps you want to just make a statement to that effect, or just say that you concur with that.
Okay.
That was section 17437. There are some other comments with respect to the curving and some of the grading issues, which we don't need to discuss here, top and bottom of curb elevations and things like that, which are, I think, can be addressed directly by the engineer and myself. I don't want to bore the board with that, because it doesn't affect the overall site plan too much.
So is it okay with the board that Charlie works with the project proponents engineer to, to go through some of the minor details?
Yep.
That's okay with everybody? Yep, okay.
The, the only thing, I did make a comment on the septic design, although that's strictly the purview of the Board of Health. But they did put a note on the plan saying they're going to request a waiver from the Board of Health to put in the reserve area at the time of construction. That may or may not impact the site construction of this plan, I don't know.
Okay.
So my suggestion was that should the waiver not be allowed, and they have to construct the entire area, including the reserve, and should it adjust anything other than what you have shown, that they need to at least come back and let you know what that adjustment is. It may be nothing, but I don't know that. The landscape plan, I made comments with respect to that, similar to what I pointed out before with respect to the buffers. Where I pointed out that there was some inconsistency had to do with that little patio that's right in the front of, of the building near the front door. It's of one shape on the site plan, it's a different shape on the landscape plan. So I'm just suggesting they get together and make the shape decision.
It's easier for us, yep.
I'm suggesting the operation and maintenance plan that's included in the storm water management program be incorporated by approval or by reference to any approval the board might grant. The last comment that I had had to do with the water quality report for Evergreen Circle that was a part of the original subdivision. And I went back and looked at that. And Holmes and McGrath's report had conclusions that were based on the buildings being on one level and with areas of just below 10,000 square feet in size. When I calculated the square footage of the site plan- When I calculated the square footage of the site plan, including the porch and including the covered pavilion, it's 11,700 plus, which is over the 10,000. If you simply include just the enclosed building and not the pavilion or the porch, it's 8650, which is underneath the 10,000. So my question is, which is the correct number to use? I don't know. Should it include the porch or should it not include the porch? If it doesn't, then you're in compliance with the assumptions that Holmes and McGrath made for nitrogen for the entire development. If, in fact, it's over the 10,000, then it's not in compliance with the conclusions he drew and in the report which this board accepted for Evergreen Circle.
If I could just respond to that quickly, though. We have a... What we were referring to was a letter that Holmes McGrath provided to the planning board in November 2017 that kind of lists some of their assumptions for the nitrate loading. And in that letter, it said that they assumed the buildings will occupy 20% of the lot area. And that's what they based their nitrate loading on.
Okay.
So that 20% of this lot comes up to 15,000 square feet. We're a little over 15,000 square feet. So that's what we were basing that on. And our building, even with the porch additions and the covered patios are well under that. So I'm not sure what the... The water quality report might have predated this letter or they might have been revised. I'm not sure.
I don't know if there are any changes. The only one I have is one that has a date at the top of 817, 2017. And on page five of eight for nitrogen loading calculations, it says A1, overall development wastewater flows. And then overall development impervious surfaces. Buildings are assumed to be one level and just below 10,000 square feet. And then it goes on to the loading for nitrogen based on the impervious surfaces, the amount of landscaping and so forth on the site. So if... It seems to me, under that set of circumstances, if it's the 8,000 square feet and doesn't include the porch or the pavilion, it seems to comply with that. If there's a later letter that revises what's in the report of 817, I have to look at it because this is the only one I have.
Yeah, the letter we have is dated November 15, 2017. So I guess I'm just making the assumption that they might have been revised or updated as part of the approval process with the Cape Cod Commission.
I pulled this out of my file from when the plan was approved and formed. It's the only one I have. If there was an adjustment to that, I will stand by whatever that adjustment is.
So this subdivision went to the Cape Cod Commission, right? Didn't it go to the Cape Cod Commission?
Yes.
Can you get us that decision?
I can.
Okay. Will you CC Charlie on that?
I will.
Those are the major things I had, Mayor Jim.
And can you make sure that we're okay? Charlie's calculated a footprint of 11,784.
11,784.
Square feet.
That's by scale, so it may not be exact, but it's close.
Make sure that doesn't trigger anything?
That's included with the covered pavilion and the porch, with the covered porch.
Just make sure it's...
The enclosed building itself, without the pavilion or the porch, is roughly 8650.
You know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes. And just in terms of the nitrate loading calculations, the loading from a rooftop is miniscule compared to the loading from paved areas or lawns or, more specifically, the septic systems. In terms of... In dealing with parts per million, the septic systems are based on 35 parts per million in the calculations. The building is 0.75 parts per million. So just an increase in the building size on a lot is going to really kind of have a negligible effect on nitrate loading calculations in general.
Say that again?
0.75 parts per million is the loading rate for rooftops.
Okay.
And 35 parts per million is the loading rate for sewage coming out of a septic system. So that's... In terms of nitrate loading on a particular property, that's usually the critical component is how much sewage the project or the property is generating. The size of the building has really
Okay.
very small impact on calculations if it gets larger or smaller. So just throwing that out there, I guess.
Nope, that's good. All right. So at this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward. If we could have one of the tables free. Does anybody from the public that would like to come and ask any questions or pose any comments? We're going to continue it to our first meeting in August. If there's anybody in the public that would like to send in a comment, please do so through our town planner, our staff. And then do it as soon as you can so we can all see it well in advance in case we have any questions. And Evan, can you give them a set of plans?
I have a large set. I can lay off.
Yep.
Certainly.
Yep. If anybody else from the public that has any concern or interest in this matter would like to address the board? Okay, is there any other comments from the board members?
Going back to the front of the building. On your elevations, right in front of the what looks like the main entrance, it says "main entrance" and a little arrow going to it. That's like on the side of the building and not the front. Is that misleading or...
No, the main entrance is on the side only because that's where parking is.
Right, okay. So it just... But the front of the building is the front and the main entrance is on the side.
That is correct.
All right. And a last one. On the front of the building, the left-hand passenger... passageway door has a... Says "fixed." And I don't understand what that means.
It's just there for symmetry. So it's an operable door on one side and a fixed window.
Oh, you can't go through it?
No.
Okay. But that... To me, that's unusual. I mean, you know, having two doors versus one.
Just to control traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Dennis?
Nope, I'm all set.
Joe?
All set.
Okay, so... Jack?
No, I'm good.
Joe?
All set, thank you.
So right now, I'm thinking of proposing a condition that your... Any tenant that would come in would be of a compatible use with respect to health and safety, especially since you're producing, you know, food. I would like to see the project opponent work with the town planner to... And Charlie, if you need to help them out, you know, get us the list of waivers or relief that you need. Evan's going to make sure that we properly notify any abutters and of any thing like that. I think some... We have to make sure that it's not a variance from the ZBA, from the zoning board of appeals.
The zoning is pretty clear that the waiver to be granted with regard to the frontage is a planning board action. And it's within your discretion to make that determination and wouldn't require a variance from the zoning board of appeals.
You were going to put... Charlie suggested that putting your... the landscaping elements on your site plan. We have a suggestion from board members to put dimensions on your buildings and then I wanted to see dimensions of your landscaping.
Can you clarify in terms of what dimensions you're looking for? The distances between trees or...
I think they were referring to the length and width of the building specifically.
Yep.
Oh, the buildings?
Yep. And then while we're talking about buffers...
I'm confused, sorry. Just to clarify, you said you need dimensions on the landscaping. Are you talking about the size of the bushes, the trees?
It seems as though some of your elements are in the buffer zone that we're going to be discussing. So it's nice to know... I think sometimes people put like a... You know, if we're discussing whether it's going to be a hundred-foot buffer or a fifty-foot buffer, you put those dimensions on there so we can see what falls inside those buffers and what don't.
You're not talking about dimensions of the plants and the trees. We're talking about the buffers.
Right.
Okay.
With respect to the buffers.
We just want to make sure we're not going the bushes, twelve inches in diameter and...
I think that the changes that happened to the bylaw in May, you should look at those and how to address those. I'll work with the town planner. I'll put in requests to town council to see exactly when those take effect. It might be town meeting and it might be the attorney general's approval.
Can I ask one question regarding that? In the... One of the articles, basically, that says we have to comply with the design guidelines for Cape Cod, future in honor of the past. If we feel the design as it stands meets those requirements, I guess it's up to the board to decide whether...
Maybe you would like to prepare a simple statement, how you feel you comply. I think it's construction and landscaping. It's not meant to... So there's several chapters in that guidebook from the Cape Cod Commission. The design and construction of the buildings and structures and site designs. So that book talks about energy efficiency. You'll see roadways, that kind of stuff. You just need to look at the section on the architecture. I think you're going to be fine on that. And I think landscaping, I think you're going to be fine. I think the landscape section is like, yeah, use native plantings. Don't use invasive plants. So you just need to address that in a statement.
Okay. Because like, do you... Which point, we feel we have addressed though? So we just need to make it in a statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that... So when the next person comes in, you know, we say, oh, we had them make a statement, we need you to...
No, I just... I'm not that dense. I'm just clarifying to make sure that I know what it is you guys are asking for. Because this is my... And first of all, I want to... I appreciate everybody's time tonight. For some of us, it's been more than a year and a half in the process. We were actually going to move to Hyannis because they want us to move. And we are committed to Mashpee and want to stay in Mashpee. And we're hoping that this can end very shortly because we have a bank that if we don't get final approval in August, that funding goes away and this whole project could go away. So the sooner the better. And so anything you can do to help us to help you get an approval in August would make a big difference. If not, that might totally have a very, very different outcome than what we have in front of us.
I'll make a suggestion. Your landscaping plan, right?
Yeah.
Is a plan from above. You might want to get some sketches of what it's going to look like from the abutters across the street. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I know that's another expense, but, you know, you talked about the building and the colors it was going to be. Just some sketches that are colorized. And, you know, of course, I strongly suggest you contacting the abutters that are going to be mostly impacted and be proactive and say, this is what we're going to show in two weeks to the planning board.
Yep.
And let them know ahead of time.
We would love and welcome anybody. You can reach out to me at yon@capecodcoffee.com by email. My cell phone is 508-330-3711.
Oh, no.
Work is 508-477-2400.
This is recorded live.
You're going to get some weird texts later, you know.
I eat, leave, live, sleep, breathe Cape Cod Coffee. I'm there 24/7. So if anybody has any questions, I would be more than happy to do this. The staff, the design team, the architects, everybody has looked at this as, what if we lived across the street? Would we want to be able to look at this and feel good about it? And that's what we are doing.
Good.
And that... We're spending a lot more money and time and effort doing it for something that we all can be proud of. The gateway to Mashpee is 130. We're not a big construction company. We don't do a lot of woodwork out front. We don't have a lot of trucks out front. We don't have a lot of noise out front. We want to create a place where families want to come hang out, a place everybody in Mashpee can be proud of. To be honest with you, 130 is not exactly that today, but we're hoping we're going to be the first company in that area to set this as the vision for the future of Mashpee. And so I'm hoping that everybody looking at this is seeing that's actually been a lot of effort put into this. We're not just winging this. We're not just throwing a bunch of stuff on a piece of paper. Trust me, I'm paying the bills, so I know that this is not just something we're putting together.
So your design team should feel comfortable talking to Charlie and whittling down this list as much as you can, right? We usually whittle this down, we try to get this down to nothing.
Absolutely. And if you'd love to come talk to us, we'd love to walk you through what we're doing, what we're doing, how we're doing it. All our equipment is smokeless, self-cleaning, so if you come by and see us roast and hear us roast, you will not hear or see anything if you're outside the building. If you're inside the building, very different. And if you are hanging out inside the building, we'll put you to work.
Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Just...
Go ahead.
I just suggest that everybody take a look at that footnote 14 under 17431 because if it turns out that you need the 50-foot buffer starting from Route 130, any landscaping or anything that you're going to see across the street in the residential zone, you're going to be looking through 50 feet of trees. So it does appear that, under certain conditions, the planning board can modify that distance. But I think it takes a little bit more scrutiny than what I've looked at so far.
And you have a build, you know, you have the stone with all those other guys all right up to 130. They don't have any buffer, zero. So...
That's true. I wasn't seated on the board when that happened.
Okay, I'm just like, no, again, we're trying to...
And I do have to say that MAFI is beautiful. I don't... You know, I...
Yep.
I live right off of 130. That's the walk I take with my family. And even... I love the splash pad. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I think that this design will fit right in.
Thank you.
And it will be better than some of them.
We think all of them, but that's okay. We're a little biased.
Evan, what was that citation that you had? You said it so quickly, was Section 174?
The one I had read?
Yeah, that you have to notify.
Sorry. 174, 25.1, subsection 4.
All right. Well, that's it. Oh, go ahead, Charlie.
Just that if it is... I know that the applicant has suggested that he's sort of in a time crunch. So if in terms of discussing these other details with the engineer along with Evan, I'll make myself available to come into the town hall whenever you want to do that.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
Take advantage of that. Trust me, it works out better.
What are you doing tomorrow, 6:00 AM? I'm just kidding.
So we need to...
I want to get coffee.
The chair will take a motion to continue this?
Make a motion to continue this to August 7 at 8...
We can have on it.
No, 7:45.
We have one public hearing that day. It's the road naming. We just made another one, didn't we?
We made two more after that.
7:20 and 7:25.
7:30, 7:45.
Okay, so it'd be... All right, so August...
August 7 at 7:45.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, yeah, I wanted to give them a whole set to take with them.
I have one right here.
I didn't want to give Charlie's sets and... Is the landscaping in there? Just get this.
I had a big landscape.
Well, that's okay.
It's the same plan.
This is all the title, "Last of Life."
If you'd like to respond, it's just... This is a... This big set here is the same as this. If you have any comments, right? It's a meal stop by town hall.
Okay, so going back to new business. So the Articles submitted to the Board of Sycamore for the October town meeting warrant, I think we should just keep... Leave that on the agenda.
Aye.
But we're going to have an ADU... But we're going to have an ADU discussion also on. Okay, that might be a later night, okay. Okay, Mashpee Commons intend to apply for development agreement, so I hear that that was just, by the agenda, that was discussed on Monday with the regulatory boards.
Yep.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so what happened?
It was actually a good discussion.
Yeah?
I think the ultimate outcome, I think Joe will agree that the planning board will be the lead, but we're going to invite the other parties to join in. And we'll all have a mutual discussion. They want us to, uh, um, to move forward with it, not to get bogged down. And, uh, uh, have productive meetings.
The only thing I, I, we got to have, when we have all these boards, we got to make sure they all can come. I mean, we got to have to pick a day. And maybe, do, do we do it on a planning board meeting?
So our, so, right, well. Yeah.
Do we do it an hour before?
Yep, we could start meeting early.
We should, I mean, in, in, set an hour. The first meeting is to see what we want to get out of this development, you know. What's the, the SOU commission, what's the planning board, the board of health. And I don't even know what Mashpee Commons really wants with this development agreement. You know, I mean, I like to see what they want so we know.
We want to meet together in the group to see that, that's. Can I? We want to meet together in the group to be part of that, to see.
Yeah, but we got to know what we're discussing. I mean, I don't, you know what I mean? We can say we want the moon and Mashpee Commons only wants to put a bridge over here.
Well, we want to, they have to propose something.
They have to propose something before we, but first we should get a discussion with everybody here. And draw up some ideas what we've, we've got to look for. That's my.
Can I make one comment, um?
I'm going to, I'm going to, so I, what I'm, I'm going to make a request of you is that you send everybody the, the local bylaw and the development agreement. Which does say that the, the planning board is the lead. It actually says that the.
I, I don't know why you need to send that out because everyone knows that. It was already discussed at the meeting, it was mentioned three times by Joe.
Excuse me?
But it's already out there.
But I want to make sure everybody gets it by email so I can, you, you, you don't have to send it to Jack.
No, I'm just saying, it's already there. It's like, you want to, it, no, but the thing is. No, but the thing is you keep rehashing this point that the, the planning board's in the lead, they all knew that, they knew the code as soon as Joe read it.
Right, but you're interrupting me and I'm asking Evan to do something.
Yeah, but this is the five of us, it's the five of us, not you, it's the five of us, so we just make sure.
Yeah, so, so I'm asking him to send it out to everybody and also, um, there's a. Is it a technical bulletin from the Cape Cod Commission that you should send that out to everybody on the planning board? The local bylaw does say that the planning board actually writes the development agreement. That's, that was my point, Jack.
I, I read the bylaw, I know exactly what it says.
So that's step number one. Um, I like Dennis's idea of starting to meet early, right? Do we want to wait until the pla- that the Mashpee Commons actually puts in these materials to the Cape Cod Commission? Or do we want to do what we did before, was we start to meet with them informally?
I think we should be right, informal, just to discuss like where we're all at, what page we're all on.
Right, I, I think what Dennis brought up and what come up out of the meeting was, um, for them not to propose something to the Cape Cod Commission. That the, us internally in town discuss first.
Yeah.
Before they propose something to the Cape Cod Commission, to see where we all are on the same page, or where, or whether we're not on the same page. I think that was one of the things come out of it. Do you, you guys?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what I said, I mean, I thought.
May I note one item out of the meeting?
No, I'm, I'm still going, I'm still going. So.
It's, okay.
The things, right, the things that are considered in a development agreement are all the chapters that are addressed in a local comprehensive plan and all the technical bulletins. So I, I think we need a, a list of all the things that would be part of a development agreement. Can you pull that together for us?
Sure.
It's, okay. Now, go ahead.
Just one item that came out of that discussion was, because this is, uh, would be proposed as a development agreement between Mashpee Commons, uh, the planning board. Or, and, and representatives of other boards and committees, um, but also the Cape Cod Commission. And one thing that Chair Gottlieb noted was, um, who, who's running the meeting? If it's the planning board, how are we going to work with the Cape Cod Commission, is it going to happen at our meetings or is it going to happen at their meetings? And he, uh, he stated that he would speak with Christie Senatory, um, to get an understanding of what that expectation is. So, um, I just wanted to note that here so that, um, we can either have Chair Wagon communicate with Chair Gottlieb about what that response was. Or if I can communicate with the Board of Selectmen about what their response was, or reach out to Christie myself.
I'd rather go.
So, that was just my, uh, comment.
Can I say one thing?
I'm going to, I'm going to need your help on technical matters.
You bet.
You're going to be involved.
The Cape Cod Commission's supposed to work for the towns. Where the planning board, we say the Cape Cod Commission, we're having a meeting, please send a representative to discuss this development agreement. We don't, I mean, they're supposed to. They're supposed to work for the town.
Who says or not, though, I mean.
But no, but we should, where the plan and where the charges are for the town, we should say, we're having a meeting Wednesday. Please send a representative, not try to go, I don't know.
I think you're right, Dennis, I think just in, for the nature of, of positive and good collaboration, we should try to work out what works for everyone. Understanding that, uh, this board is going to be in control of the process, um, I think it just helps for efficiency to.
Well, we, you're right, so you write the development agreement, but it goes to the Board of Selectmen for final approval.
Right.
And if they don't approve it, they kick it back to us.
Right.
So it's like they have final approval.
Yeah.
So, um. The other thing, um, Evan, I need some help with is, um, if, we might be in a position that we need a consultant. There's two types of consultants, there's ones that, that do research from scratch. Review, uh, review plans or development agreements. There's other that, others that just double check what other consultants have done. So, um, we need to figure out what's the ability of the town to hire a special consultant on this.
Sure.
In the past, um, when we were doing this before, it was Doug Storres, I don't know if you ever met him.
Yeah.
And he, they were very willing to pay for a consultant, provided it was reviewing their work. So if they had a traffic study, they didn't want to pay for the town to do its own independent traffic study. But just to have a traffic consultant review their work. Um, remember that?
Yeah.
Remember that, okay. So that's something else. Is there anything else?
Uh, the first thing that I think we should do is try to get the in-town people to our first meeting, just to, to see where we're at. And see, you know, like maybe our next meeting or the one afterwards, just to see how many people show up from the town and what ideas they have. And then we could get, you know, Andrew is going to call the Cape Cod Commission, try to see how they, their schedule is for us.
The only, the only I say to that is I think what's going to end up happening to be the first meeting will be ground rules will be set up. The first meeting, and I don't think you're going to have a lot of productive comments, so the second meeting may to be a better time for public.
No, I don't want the public, I just want in-house people.
Oh, you're talking about the different committees, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, absolutely.
Boards and stuff.
Yeah.
Just to come in here so we can say, like you said, Jack, set, put the ground rules, what are we going to.
Exactly.
So that we have a.
Are there any other development agreements that the Cape Cod Commission has been involved in?
I would imagine, yes, but I have no idea.
No, they, they said there was only one in Yarmouth. They said in Yarmouth with that, um.
That motel?
The motel thing. I sat on.
I thought that was just a giz, but I'll look at it.
I sat on development, but there were work development agreements with the union, like in Gare Island.
Okay.
We made agreements that we wouldn't strike, but they have to do according like that, but we all sat down in a big room. I, I was a steward, we had all the stewards on the job, but they sat down and they worked, you know, a, a different thing. But before we went to that meeting, we all sat down in a room.
Okay.
And said, here's what we got to look for and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we did it, I mean, I just sat there.
So you have to be careful that we're not disqualifying ourselves in any way, just sitting on something later on.
Well, and that's one of the things that I think Andrew brought up too, was not having, but not having three members of one committee there, having two per committee. Just avoid that issue. Um, but I, I think, I, I like the idea of meeting early before one of our meetings. And then we're all here and we have the other members here and we can kind of lay some ground rules and figure out where the heck we're starting this from.
All right, I'll let Andrew know what's going on.
All right. He, he also told me to calm down at the meeting.
Maybe we can add it to the August seventh meeting, what the heck, it's already long enough.
Two thousand nineteen One Cave Summit invoice. I'm sure you worked that out with the planning, uh, department staff. I don't have anything for, are you all set? Do we need to vote on it?
Um, I, I have confirmation from Joe, Jack, Mary, Rob to attend One Cave. No one else notified me, so I have an invoice ready to sign.
Okay.
Um, registration ends this week, which is why I'm here today.
Okay.
It's twenty-ninth and thirtieth, a Monday and a Tuesday.
It's nice.
Oh, I bet that, that, that before. Oh, that's July.
It is July.
No, but I was looking at August.
I had Patty send out reminders and, and, uh, we were hoping to be able to pay this invoice.
There you go.
But you do have time to register, but I'd like to at least deal with those who have registered.
All right, so let's pay for this and then if you register.
I registered now, I think I go.
It's, uh, ninety dollars per, um, individual, so I'm requesting the board authorize three hundred and sixty dollars to pay for Joe Callahan, Jack Phalen, Mary Wagon and Rob Hanson at this time.
Okay.
I'll sign, I, let me sign, I, I'll go on the.
So you want to register too?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have to do that as a separate approval because I've already input this requisition. Um, so register, let me know in an email and we'll, we'll come back to the board. So I'm asking the board for an approval of three hundred and sixty dollars to send, uh, Joe Callahan, John Phalen, Mary Wagon and Rob Hanson.
I can accept a motion for that payment?
So be.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it, okay. Um. Okay, so, uh, we went to an ED, I went to an EDIC meeting, Evan had mentioned that he was going, Dennis, uh, went also. There's a lot of land that, um, the EDIC has been trying to develop. They might change their efforts from trying to get a hotel there to housing. So I told the chair, who is Carol Sherman, that I would dig up some, uh, model zoning bylaws. So we all know about chapter forty B, twenty-five percent of the units have to be affordable. You can also do, um, local action units, um, which allow for the development of affordable housing. The town can waive certain zoning issues such as density, height, um, side setbacks, that kind of stuff. In exchange for the, you know, the deed restricted affordable units, but there's no, um, profit cap. And there's no certification of cost, um, which can be a burden to some developers. So there's an advantage, basically it puts the town completely in control of what kind of affordable housing they want. You don't have to have ten percent three bedrooms, you can, you can choose the number of units and the makeup of the bedrooms, that kind of stuff. You still have to have a lottery, it still has to be affirmatively and fairly marketed, but.
Can you permit a mixed-use project under LA, um, local action unit?
Yeah, yeah. You basically send it up to the state and they say, okay. And because this is a town-owned lot, they should be pretty supportive of that.
Cool.
That's what Dennis suggested, that they don't just do housing, they do mixed-use, right Dennis?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so that's that. And also, um, gosh, was it a week ago, Monday, under, there was a conversation? It was a good, it was a really intense, um, Board of Selectmen meeting. If Mashpee TV has it up online, you should, you should watch it. It had pickleball, it had all sorts of stuff, and they talked about.
Did they play pickleball?
I met my neighbor, you know, and, um.
She testified.
On up, because they asked who, who on that, who was on that street, have they heard the pickleball courts? My hand went up. But, um, it worked out good.
No, you said you didn't hear the pickleball, because you don't hear them.
When I, from my, where I live, but when I walked down where he, this guy lives.
I went down there and I, and I was like, boom, boom, I said, what the heck is that? I didn't know where.
You're going crazy.
Well, they're going to do some noise attenuation things to see if that will work.
A lot of people use it, though, I mean, they, they have fun there.
They do. So, um, but they got into the discussion about community preservation. Remember I said that the CPC put in a memo to the Board of Selectmen saying that they wanted to keep the surcharge at three percent? Board of Selectmen might, for the next town meeting or the one after that, put in a proposal where it would go down to two percent for community preservation. And two percent for WIF, which is the bank account for wastewater.
I think that's a good idea.
So just, just, um, okay, so, um, board member committee reports. Anything from Cape Cod Commission, Joe?
Uh, no, nothing, checked in.
Okay. I think I just gave my CPC update, design review. Anything from design review? Oh, I'm sorry, oh my god, I'm wrong, Joe!
Both of us, we're both.
Yeah, they both went.
Uh, we, we both went, um.
Did you hold hands?
Um, application for a seven thousand square foot warehouse office around twenty Evergreen Circle, which seemed positive. Uh, and then there was a, another one, uh, application for, uh, a proposed, uh, almost ten thousand square foot, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three square foot. Commercial building, um, over on four thirteen, um, one fifty-one, uh, which proposes at a Dollar Tree.
Wow.
Uh, that was with some issue, they wanted to make it more designed Cape Cod appropriate with Cape Cod Commission, so we'll see how that goes. But in the very beginning states, and both have to come back for science back to the commission, so that's all I got.
That's great. Plan review?
On the, the Dollar Tree proposal, um, I did, I voted against this proposal. And I offered the comment that I believe, and I, I, my recommendation to the ZBA, the motion was worded in that. I believe the applicant is creating their own hardships on this lot. It's a really restrictive lot, there's a paper road on the property, um, there's a fifty, uh, fifty-foot setback from the rear lot line. I think seventy-five foot from the front. You are constrained to a rather small area in which you can build on that site. When the cherry stones burned down, they didn't rebuild within their certain amount of time, so they lost their grandfather to rights on that lot. So they do have to comply with the zoning of today to rebuild. So I think what the site plan that they proposed was the best possible scenario for a nine thousand nine hundred and eighty square foot building. But they required an exhaustive list of variances in relief that I believe they're creating hardships for themselves. When I review these things, I ask myself, would a, would a smaller building require the variances from the zoning board of appeals? Or, or is this lot developable in some other scheme that would be complying with the zoning bylaw? And I think the answer is yes. So I did not suggest approving, uh, this project for those reasons. And voted, uh, to not recommend approval to the zoning board of appeals for the, for those reasons.
What are the plan reviewed, uh, what did the design review, they vote for it or?
Um, well, they, they, they voted, um, to, I think, add some conditions with regard to the architecture and material palette of the building. Which the ZBA can't regulate, but they can suggest. Um, and, you know, from the plan review perspective, um, it's going to be a tough case by Attorney Corain to, to make before the ZBA. But I, I, I don't believe the conditions for relief exist in this particular scenario.
Um, Greenway Quashnit, oh, sorry, Environmental Oversight Committee.
We reviewed the draft helium balloon bylaw, which, uh.
Did you inhale helium as you were reviewing it?
Yeah, yeah. We all got high on it. And, uh, it looks pretty good, so that'll be at the, uh, October meeting. Santuitt Pond, uh, uh, the people that make the solar bee are donating another solar bee.
Yes!
For a year to try it.
Is that in the newspaper? Put that in the newspaper, that's awesome. That's awesome.
Just for a year.
Yep, to see if it would work. Good for them, good. It's a lot of money.
There wasn't much to, uh, well, they're going to be sampling of Santuitt Pond and Sumit Pond. If funds are available in July and August. and Sumit Pond, if funds are available in July and August. And, uh, the restoration shellfish program, they got four and a half million cohocks that they're going to be putting in the Mashpee River. And, uh, going to clean up, they're going to start to try to clean up of John's Pond, and that was it. It's kind of a slow move.
Okay, uh, Greenways and Quasnet Footbridge, I need, Jeff, Rob, I just need to, we just need to set a date to, to meet. Um, do you want to come here and see if Drew McManus will meet with us?
Sure.
Okay, let me, let's try, or Caitlin, I'll, we'll, they're, they're the staff contact for that money, actually.